Recording in progress.
Good job. In the absence of Mayor Lawrence, I'll call the regular scheduled Riedel City Council meeting of June 21st, 2022 quarter. We have nothing to report out of closed session.
Mayor Garms, Mayor Proton Johnson, Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Woodall, your city manager, Chief of Police Connor, Finance Director Gillingham, Meeting Development Director Caldwell, Wastewater Roadway Superintendent Jensen, Wastewater Superintendent Taylor, Management Ellen Sandborn. Thank you.
And Mayor Garms, excuse me, stand and join me in charge. As oil and divisions do the fire of the United States of America, and to the three mother of which stands one nation under God, universal with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations, this is a person to wish to address council on any matter not on the agenda of the district council. As such, dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Brown Act. I need to require the council action models on this agenda to be based on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs. Unless the finding is made by at least two thirds of the council that I came up after the agenda was posted and it's emergency manager requiring immediate action. Please note in comments, the maximum is three minutes. Anybody comments? Any comments received? We'll post that item in consent calendar. And consent calendar has five items on it, two to the minutes of June 7th group resolution, 1544 about the appropriation limit, approved purchase of services for an annual audit, group extension of employment agreement for the chief, and approve the 2022 street res- resurfacing project. And the check list, six items. Any of the council which do pull any items? Any public request you can pull any items? Is there a motion to approve items 1 through 6 of the consent calendar? We got a motion in a second, please vote. Councilmember Carter, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, system's working well. Staff reports, city manager and staff update page 25 of our packet. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Johnson and members of the council. Just a short update for this week. The GR Sunberg project is wrapping up at the moment, so there will be a review of that project tomorrow with the contractor. And then staff has also been working on the Clean California grants, including giving a tour earlier today to representatives from Caltrans of the sites. And we were informed that we are so far the first of the recipients from Clean California to execute an agreement with Caltrans to move those projects forward. So we're doing well in terms of pacing on that. If there's any questions that the council has of staff, happy to try to respond. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
I have no question as of yet.
Councilmember Wilson.
No, no questions.
Councilmember Carter, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Kyle, I have one question regarding the Clean California Act. Do we have a idea when those two projects may go to bid?
They're gonna go to bid early in 2023. And right now, we're engaging in the kind of final design process and beginning that. And the project is expected to be completed by the state. Their deadline is the end of June of 2024. So it's a relatively tight timeline for state grants.
Any questions from the public, in-house, and raise? Moving on to special presentation, presentation of Caltrans, year over seismic retrofit project update, page 28 of our packet.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Johnson, members of the council. This might take a second to put PowerPoint up on the screen. But we do have representatives from Caltrans here to discuss the retrofit and partial replacement of the northbound Highway 101 bridge just outside of town. And I believe the official name of the bridge is the Muffet Bridge, although I don't think very many people call it the Muffet Bridge, but that's the, that is the GHB. You want to click, minimize that title of the notes.
I don't think this is the PowerPoint that I shared. I would be happy to share, but I guess we disabled sharing from our end. Would that be possible?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No worries. It looks kind of cool what you're doing. I'm interested. So is okay if I share now? Oh, no, can't share. Did that work?
All right, Marie, that should allow you to share.
Okay, I can see myself sharing. Okay, let me, let me try. Are you, oh no. Can you see me now? Let's see. Forgive me. Okay, now, are you, are you able to see us now? Can you hear me and see it?
Yes.
Okay, hello. Thank you for having patience with me and my technical abilities. I'm just gonna go here. I'm with Caltrans. My name is Marie Brady. I'm just gonna read here the Title VI statement. I'm gonna skip that. It's just basically that we are a, we believe in diversity and we do not discriminate against race, color, national origin, sex, age, or disability. So we are a thoughtful organization and agency devoted to all peoples. So what I like to do, my name is Marie Brady. I am the project manager for this project. I'd like to give you an update on where Caltrans is in our project development process. This includes the design concept, the environmental considerations, and the expected construction timeframe. There will be an opportunity for city council members and the other interested parties to ask questions at the end of my presentation. I've asked the project engineer Dan Stiles, who's here with us tonight, and our environmental coordinator Zach Larson, to be available to help me answer questions after the presentation for specific technical topics. So as you can see here, this is our beautiful trust structure that that's gonna be replaced. And so what we're planning to do at this point is, I think the last time when I spoke to Kyle, we weren't sure what our retrofit strategy was gonna be. Well, after a few years of studying, because of the reconstruction that was done in 1986 after the last flood event in the 1980s, it was, it was deemed that a full replacement was not deemed necessary by our DES folks in headquarters. So what we're gonna do is replace the south frame to the bridge for where the 1941 trust is because it's at the end of the service life. And we're gonna perform a partial seismic retrofit of the north frame.
Marie, if I could interject, your screen is still on the, on the very first slide that you have.
Oh, no. Okay. Why is it not sharing? Okay. This is not good. All right, are you here? Can you see me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. I am so sorry. So Zoom is not my forte. Thank you for being patient. Right now, we're about $55 million. That's our latest cost estimate. Can you see this? Are we moving across? This is where we're at in the project schedule. We're about to circulate the draft environmental document and for public comment in the fall of October, which is October of this year. We expect to complete the environmental phase next spring. We're, we want to start construction hopefully of the spring of 2026 and finish by the fall of 2028. So that's basically a three-year construction. So at this point, for the design, we're, we have really, we're only at the conceptual level. And as you can see, I'm showing you, this is the part of the bridge that's being replaced, which is the 1941 trust. And so I want to show you what that's gonna look like. This is from our, our advanced planning studies. You can see that's gonna be looks like a cast-in-place box skirter. So it's gonna look like that. We're gonna have an aesthetic barrier treatment on the rail. That's gonna be a solid barrier. And so that's where, if you want to see what that's gonna look like, that's what we have planned so far. And then for the retrofit program portion of it, we're actually beginning the seismic analysis at this point. So we're doing some advanced design. So we won't know exactly what the retrofit strategy is gonna be until probably early next year. So I would love to show you something at this point, but we're still kind of in the midst of the studies of it. So what we can expect to see is the driving experience is that we're gonna have, all along the bridge, we're gonna have an aesthetic barrier rail. It's gonna be a decorative treatment. I would, at the next time, I would love to show you what that looks like. We're still kind of going through our own internal vetting, but I'd like to show that to you at the next opportunity and ensure that with you. So at construction, I just wanted to briefly say that we want to make sure as, as an agency that we're reaching out to you as our external stakeholder. So we're gonna have frequent meetings with Kyle and staff and also with the city council at your behest as we would like to come out and talk to you and keep you abreast of what's going on as we go through the project phase. So you will see us more often than normal. Again, we are gonna be starting the spring of 2026 for construction. And what you're probably more interested in is what we plan to do with the traffic while we're building the structure and working on it. We are going to detour traffic on the southbound bridge that's there. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dan.
No, you're right.
Okay, thank you. Sometimes I'm a little off.
No, you got it.
And then we're gonna do some community outreach again in the fall of 2022, hopefully around October. And this is an example of what we're gonna do. It's like a flyer we use for different project. And we're gonna be coordinating, of course, with the city of Rio de Janeiro, and not only our utility relocations, but also with other members of staff, just to make sure that even our landscape architecture is gonna work, our landscape architect's gonna work with the city to make sure they have a choice in what the plantings are, plantings for vegetation at the end of the project. So you guys have a, have a say in what's gonna happen as you enter Rio de Janeiro. So we've had that commitment from our landscape architecture to the city. So I want to go through the environmental process. And as you can see, you know, this exhibit shows our process that we're doing. And we're completing the environmental phase. And we are here, if you can see, we are at the green. We're, we're heading towards the DED, which is the public review comment period. And hopefully, we will be going down this road and hit spring 2026. And so we'll be preparing the final environmental document. We are working with our agencies right now. And we're, right now, we're preparing an initial study mitigated negative declaration. And beneath the document that we're looking at is a categorical exclusion, which means that we'll potentially trying to mitigate significant environmental impacts to less than significant impacts. What you'll be seeing probably later on in the fall is some of the drilling that's gonna happen in the river. And that's drilling for geotechnical data. So you'll probably see that as you drive by in the fall. So look out for that. And as far as evaluation environmental impacts, this is some of the things that we have to look at for CECL. So that's why our studies are taking so long. This is 20 subject areas that our environmental people have to do. So we will address each of those, and you will see that in the public comment period that's coming. And I just want to give you, this is Miles Cochrane. He is our PIO officer, our public information officer here. But you could always reach out to me anytime, or, and I will be more than happy to answer any questions. I know it's kind of, kind of quick, and I do apologize that I don't have more information, but that's kind of where we're at. We're at the end of our studies right now. And we are just waiting for our studies to come in, start formulating a cost estimate. And the next time you'll probably hopefully see us will be probably in October. So I feel, and I like to, as soon as I'm able to release the aesthetic barrier concept, I would like to have your concurrence as that as well. So hopefully that'll come in the next couple of months. So are there any questions at this point that any of us here at Caltrans can answer? Thank you.
Councilmember Woodall, any questions?
I'm gonna wait until you ask your questions, because I'm sure this is your, maybe you'll ask all the questions.
Councilmember Wilson, questions?
I think at this stage, I don't, I don't lie. What she's given us is a primary.
Councilmember Carter, any questions?
Not right this second, thank you.
Why, I have a comment. I, I see that Daniel Stiles is the project engineer.
Hi, boss.
Miles's first supervisor with Caltrans. Excellent employee.
Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you again, Gordon.
Thank you. Any questions from staff? Any hand raised, females? Marie, thank you very much for the presentation. And we look forward to subsequent updates.
Yeah, I'm, we're happy to come out. And as soon as we have more information, we'll be more than happy to share it with you. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to our design team. I feel really lucky that we have Dan. Dan's my brains, and Zach is also my brains too. So I'm just here just to keep the resources going, right? Thank you so much, everyone.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the page 50 of our packet, presentation by GHB, Riedel Sanitary Sewer Evaluation Study. Rebecca?
Thank you, councilmembers, for having me here today. It's my pleasure to be here in person. I was excited. Every little thing that sort of opens up, you know what's next. So yeah, so press the, like, the present it button. Then I don't know if you want, if you can minimize the people so you can see the whole, we'll miss some of the slides. There we go. Thank you. So we've been working with the city for a number of years now on a sanitary sewer evaluation study, started with the city's previous operator, and we've been working closely with Derek now on this project. So today, we'd like to review what that study's about, to the next slide. So first, we're in this project is multi-part, and we've really tried to leverage the dollars to the city's greatest needs. So we're gonna go over today the GIS data collection and mapping that was completed. And we've completed the flow monitoring, so we're gonna go over the flow monitoring results. A portion of the project has really been dedicated to the Pano Street sewer line in advancing that project to deal with some sanitary sewer overflows. But we did, we're in the process of completing a disinfection evaluation, so we'll give you an update on the initial testing, where we are in full-scale testing. Take a look at the overall schedule and then next steps, next slide. So we started field data collection in March of 2020, so right at the very beginning of the pandemic. After that, we actually had the pandemic, so it slowed the project a little bit down, so I added that on there. And then we took the information, so you can see here, we had field staff actually go out and they had field equipment. So they took the, you know, latmong of every, or almost every manhole in the city, or all the ones that we could find. And then they also, the city, we worked with the city staff, were very helpful. They opened up the manholes. We took pictures inside the manholes. We took depths of the different inlets and outlets. We took little drawing pictures. So for each manhole, we've got that information now stored in a JAS database. And that's the next item on here is the Esri Atlas online system deployment. So that was the summer of 2020. As part of this project, we purchased a one-year license, and the cities now are meaning not on your own, because they've seen the value in that project. But we tested out a one-year license to give city staff access to the GIS. So essentially, you have access to an online portal versus buying the software yourself and being responsible for managing it so we can kind of co-manage. So when Derek says, hey, I need help with this, or I need access to that, we can get in there and help it. So we also went through and did, you know, a bunch of inspection information. We've gone through and come through that GIS and identified areas where we're still missing a little bit of information, or, you know, we've still got some questions. We have active maps that the city can use right now to be looking at that information. We've used that information to buy the city into sewer sheds. And then also just in terms of the, you know, where we've leveraged this information, we're now working with the city under separate funding, under city funding to bring the water system GIS into that framework. So several years ago, the city invested in For so several years ago, um, the city invested in making sure all the old information from the water system was incorporated into G I S system. We, we gave Randy some hard copy maps. Now that's being incorporated into the online system as well. So um, next slide. So this is just a little example. This is the inspection information that's in here. So for each of those um S's, we're collecting information, right? So you can see in here, we've got notes with the city observed. So it's a really great way to be collecting information and also maintaining that historical record. You know, like I mentioned, I started this project with a different wastewater operator and I hope Dirk stays for a long time. But it's just something that we've seen, something that you see in this area is turnover, turnover in staff and working with another city right now. And they're just like, we have no idea what's going on because everybody left before they took the time to gather information. So um it's, you know, it's really important to be collecting that information. So this is one way that we're doing it is just identifying, if you go to the next slide, this is just an example of, you know, some of the information that's in that mapping, um, in that mapping platform. So you can see there, we've got, you know, the whole city. We've got it right there. It's color-coded by um the types of, it's color-coded by the type of pipe there. And then once you go use it in deeper, all the manholes are numbered. And then for each manhole, um, you can click on it. It's giving you that kind of information. So that's a, I think if you go to, I think that's the last slide on the J S. No, one more. And this is sort of that transition slide. Um, what this represents is uh how we use the G I S information and understanding of how the pipes flow to divide the sewer system into different uh flow monitoring basins. So we use this information and worked with a subconsultant who came out and collected some data. I want to say it was the winter of twenty twenty one period. So if you go to the next slide, that shows some of the um monitoring results that we're looking at. So you can see we've got the rainfall. Um, the design storm rainfall is the blue there on the top. Then we've got the um base flow and I N I response. So the base flow is that little dotted line on the bottom and then the I N I response is this, is that peak there? So we can tell that there are some issues going on. The table on the side shows the base flow and then the design storm peak wet weather flows for each of the different basins. So the same kind of information, just comparing that average flow to, or the, yeah, the average dry weather flow, essentially your summer flow, compared to some of the peak flows that we saw during the monitoring study. And then there's the ratio on the side. It's also color-coded. I was red. It's worse. You can see that basin twelve there is, um, is one that we're going to be focusing on. So the, you know, the higher ratios obviously are for the lower basins. See, but one of the things that we're going to do next is start to use modeling to refine these numbers and go through a calibration process to really narrow down, you know, which pipes we can get is. That's in combination with some other, with some other items. Another component of this project has been the painter street sewer rehabilitation. So that was a project that we initiated a couple of years ago. We were able to get included into this project. So the city got reimbursed for some previous work that G H D had done and then we were able to take it to the next step with this one. So we did easement, um, we did easement research to ensure that the city, you know, where are the city's easements? And where can we replace the pipeline? We looked at several alternatives and worked with city staff. So the final project is replacement of the existing twelve-inch sewer line with an eighteen-inch line with new manholes and connections to the existing system. I'm going to mention, we did the title of works to verify easements. And then just, um, just earlier this month, we were able to submit a clean water S R F construction grant application for the entire project. And if you go to the next slide, so this just talks a little bit about the city's disadvantaged community status. As you may know, this is something that um gets updated every so often and it's something we're tracking. The most recent update, um, the city got in a more advantageous position for funding. You move from uh disadvantaged to severely disadvantaged. And that, and we'll see on the next slide that that opens up some grant funding opportunities. Again, this is relative to the state of California. Um, so I think here in the North Coast, we tend to benefit from not working in San Francisco or L A. And so that tends to bump up the statewide median household income. So the city qualifies as a severely disadvantaged community. This is a little bit busy, but essentially, um, what it says is that because you're a severely disadvantaged community, the city is eligible for up to a hundred percent, what they call principal forgiveness or grant for up to six million dollars. So that we're, and we're looking at a project about one point five million to finish off the painter street. So assuming things continue the way they are and our application moves forward, the goal is to essentially have that project down to the central funded. And working with the state takes a long time. Ideally, we'd love to get it in next summer. I know Derek doesn't like the interest of the current system. But sometimes it takes location to the ground. So that's moving forward. If anyone wants to take a breath or say any questions or I'll just keep plowing through. Okay, um, so next was our disinfection evaluation. So back in twenty seventeen, the city was the kind schedule order for exceedances of disinfection byproducts. Essentially, when you chlorinate the water, sometimes there's um suspended solids in there that will bond with the chlorine and they create these um byproducts that they want in the river. And between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty, city staff updated operations procedures and conducted testing. But unfortunately, the system changes that were implemented did not result in the reduction of disinfection byproducts. So an evaluation of correction options was added to the sanitary sewer evaluation study. It wasn't originally part of the scope, but we were able to um add it back in. And then um in twenty twenty to twenty twenty one, we did an evaluation of chlorination disinfection and assessment of surface water ammonia discharge impacts to aquatic species and we developed a pilot plan. Um, one of those pieces, and there's a little, um, one of those pieces was we had, um, still our sciences conduct a muscle study. So they wanted to find out what the aquatic species were in maybe a river about the city's discharge because that determines the uh, the city's final ammonia ratio. So we got that study done and determined what the city's um ammonia limits would be. Just if you're curious, the study found more than twenty-five California floater muscles within the study area. Um, the muscles were located on the east back, east bank of the river opposite the discharge. Um, no freshwater muscles were to the west side. Go to the next slide. So in um twenty twenty, we conducted some disinfection evaluation bench testing using different buckets to determine um the ratio of chloramines that would work and to look at the um potential um ammonia. The results showed that the highest residual ammonia level the city recorded was approximately point eight milligrams per liter. And the limiting factor determined if chloramine, uh, chloramine disinfection is feasible option is whether the disinfection requirements can be met while still meeting a proposed ammonia limit. So if you go to the next slide, essentially you were able to confirm that. So this shows our um ammonia results. So on average, the city is predicted to have an average monthly effluent limit of ten point four milligrams per liter. That's based on um some calculations from regional board. And that's typically to incur November to March when river flows are higher and the temperature's cooler. You go to the next slide. Our next step is to, to conduct the full-scale chlorination test. So we took the results of the bench testing, analysis of the ammonia limits, the freshwater muscle studying. We presented that to the regional board and said, hey, can you conduct a full-scale study? The city has the benefit, right? The issue with the disinfection byproducts and the ammonia are more surface water discharge issue than versus ammonia discharge into land. So we can conduct a full-scale study when the city is discharged into land. And that's what the regional board has approved. So um we are working right now to finalize the design to get Sarah, I was talking to Hannah just today. To finalize the electrical component of it. And the city has the ammonia analyzers and so will conduct a full-scale study, taking a look at that ammonia concentration. And if that goes well, the intent would be then to um develop a full-scale project. The city staff can complete most of the installation work on site. This is overall amended project schedule. Like I mentioned, um, this has been going on a while now. Um, I think we're making really good progress. Again, the value of the um city funds. Um, but we have requested a project amendment. We've been working closely with the um state board. And so our goal is to complete the project essentially by, you know, within about a year from now. Including all the components. If you want to go to the last slide, you can just, yeah, talk about the next step. So we talked about the full-scale chlorination disinfection test. So that's to install the temporary ammonia analyzer system and collect data and then be successful. Um, develop a concept for the permanent system and submit the permanent modifications to the regional board. Another piece is the closed circuit television video. So when I talk about some of the G I S and finalizing the data, what we'd like to do, and we've identified several areas, is send them out there, have them collect information and that'll help tell us there's a couple of areas where we don't know where the pipe goes or where we've got some questions and that will help answer that. One of the reasons we've been hesitating on that, we've asked for a budget amendment. Everything's gotten more expensive over, you know, the pandemic and, and things like that. So we've asked for some additional budget to get that work done, but we're still trying to get it on the schedule. And then we'll incorporate the results of that into the G I S system and also into the final analysis of replacement needs. Um, next, once we have the data, we can finalize the hydraulic model based on a C C T D and other fieldwork, use those results to support system improvements in terms of pipe sizing and things like that. Um, and then the final deliverable is the sanitary sewer evaluation study that's summarizing all those findings and then um developing a prioritized list of collection system projects with costs and concept designs. That was a lot of info. Are there any questions? And Derek, I don't know if you have anything to add.
Councilmember Carter, do you have any questions?
That was so much information. Thank you. Um, it seems like a lot is riding on this chloramine disinfection test and I would just, I'm, I'm curious to see how that goes and would love an update on that when the time comes. Other than that, no questions. Uh, thank you for coming. I'm sorry to miss the first in-person presentation. And that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, questions?
Councilmember Wilson?
Oh, good. Thank you, Rebecca. I have several questions. You, I think you indicated Rebecca that uh nearly all of the manholes have been G I S. Has, has that been refined to all of them or are we still some short?
We are working that, which Rebecca had mentioned, is updating our G I S description and that's allows us to work with uh G H D to update our G I S map through their uh software coordinator. So we're finding new stuff every time we go out and discover things. So what we're having to really do right now is to make them edits and to make sure that the map is as accurate as possible. To the best of my knowledge, for the sake of plus or minus the error, I'd say we're ninety-five percent com, you know, completed on identifying our.
And the ones, just the ones that aren't, weren't mapped is because we couldn't find them or, you know, they were hard to locate, so it's.
Well, we are, we are finding manholes. Maybe a year ago, when we had our street project, we found one down at Old Street, uh, the east end of it. We're making discoveries of things that paid over, you know, thirty years ago and nobody knows about.
And I'm assuming you're getting that information.
Do you have any idea on any might here about the painter street upsides ground?
That is a very good question. I've been working with and on a number of projects with the state board. My experience has been they take quite a while, so I wouldn't be surprised if it took a year to get a funding application in hand.
So we have to have some more inflows before.
Well, there's going to be at least one more winter. Hopefully not two. They have all of our information, you know, as soon as we get a person, we can maybe start cooking them a little bit and see if we can push it forward. They have a lot of money. I think they're a little bit understaffed, um, but it's their job to get the money out. So um, I'm, I'm hopeful that they're going to potentially improve their process a little bit.
Would it help the city to uh rub shoulders with the sentiment where?
Well, I have found that that's not incredibly helpful. I mean, I'm, I'm sure that your representative support you. You know, the state's doing what they can. They're just kind of limited on, on staff. I think the best thing again, once you get a person is just to be on top of your person and try and push them to move it forward, right? Because they've got ten, twenty projects that they're responsible for. So often the speaking bill gets the contract first, it's been.
And my final question is, uh, basin twelve. Page fifty-five.
Yes.
And fifty-six. It's a little bit of surprise to me. I don't know if that's a surprise to anybody else, but I thought I promised her more, but basin one and two and, and uh some of the other areas, but uh.
That was the pricing test as well. So I just to give you, I mean, an update, I, I kind of explain this as to the Davis. Everyone, Davis is actually collecting through both the stations and means of gravity for everything north of the David Street, you know, David Street. It, it all pretty much collects in ancient base down to Painter Street and then runs through our main line through the field that we're trying to get upsize. The only thing I can really think of without actually knowing how to mod, you know, explain the results of the, of the flow monitoring through the engineering standpoint would be that it's really the hub at which everything comes together and then runs down. So, you know, we have several flow monitoring stations set up in that area. And I think that's why it's reflective of such a high, uh, high amount of biodiversity due to the size of the infrastructure and the collection of everything towards the Davis to that particular area. As you can see, the painter street, where we have our homes, it's associated with basin twelve, right there on the border of basin twelve and basin six.
Would any hands raised, emails, questions? Rebecca, thank you very much.
Yeah, it's my pleasure.
We're usually waiting the next update. Next item is a special call. Rate adjustment for Recology River and Acceptance Amendment Solid Waste and Recycling Franchise of July first, twenty twenty-two, create sixty-six of our packet to manage. Uh, thank you, Mayor Gornes, or excuse me, Mayor Proton Johnson, members of the council. So annually, we do the uh, uh, this rate adjustment with uh Recology River. And Linda Wise, who normally comes and does the presentation, is uh the Erika, right now doing the very same presentation for that city. Uh, and today we have Frank Nelson, uh, who's here to present uh on behalf of Recology.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, uh, Mayor Proton Johnson, ladies and gentlemen, the council. If you can bring up the powerful message. Start there. Yeah. All right. So we're here today. Uh, again, Linda sent me the qualities in three directions that she sent me in her place. I'm Frank Nelson, I'm the operations manager for Recology, Yellow River, Ecology, Humble County, Ecology Arcade. I'm usually kind of the guy in the background behind Linda. So here, I'm here to talk today about the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Steve Rio del rate application. If you want to jump to the next slide. And like Kyle put it, you know, every year we do this, we, we meet together with the municipalities and talk about the change in the predicted rate of what's going to be next year. There's a few factors that go into it. Uh, the best way to put it is that one of them is collections and the other one is, is pass-through cost. So the cost of collections to actually pick up the garbage and then pass through costs, which are made at your disposal and then recycle process. So with the two things uh put together, you know, all things considered, we'll just jump out there for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three rate year. We're looking at about a two point five to two point eight percent increase in, in, in garbage rates. If you want a slide for the next slide. It makes it a little bit difficult to put these up, the PowerPoint. It's kind of small, so. On this slide and exhibit B of the packet, uh, you'll see the consumer price index table representing what it costs for a basket of goods or services paid by consumers. So between two thousand nine and two thousand twenty-one, you're, you know, we're comparing January, January over January, you know, on the all-ordered table. And that's in the franchise agreement is, is that's the methodology used for CPI increases, right? And so between two thousand one and two thousand, or two thousand nine, two thousand twenty-one, CPI range for negative point one percent to two point nine percent. And so this January over January that we're using for comparison is a seven point five percent increase CPI. Um, so the seven point five percent, and it's important to keep in mind, the seven point five percent CPI application is only applied to the collections portion, portion of the, of the rate. And if, if, bear with me if you, if you've heard this before, but it's kind of a nutshell presentation. So, so the seven point five percent CPI is only charged to a portion of rate that represents the collection. It's not applied to pass through costs, disposal, recycling. If you were to look at exhibit B on the rate application, you're going to see that's the seven point five percent of, of the, is the only, the only portion that's applied to the collection costs. So the way the rates break down is about sixty-nine percent of your costs for your garbage tray are in curbside collections. The other thirty-one percent is in pass-through, which is disposal and recycle process. You want to go to the next slide? So with, with the pass through on disposal, so talking about just specifically the garbage, not the recycle process. So your pass through for disposal, the first part deals with the ERP or Fortuna Transfer Station or College. That part of, is the fee for handling Rio Dell's waste at the Fortuna Transfer Station. The other portion of that is going to be your HWMA fees. We can't set our rates for the collection, the collection rates for customers in Rio Dell until we get the HWMA budget approved, which happened, I think, was on May twelfth. So on the budget that happened on May twelfth, they are asking for a five percent rate increase. So when you couple that with what it, basically the, the rates of what it costs to handle the refuse at Yellow River Transfer Station, it works out to be a, works out to be a four point eight percent increase or four point seven seven. So one thing that we wanted to note to this year is that, uh, if we were to take the trash directly from Rio Dell to HWMA, you would, you would be incurring the cost of fuel and man hours for garbage trucks to drive all the way to HWMA. Since we take it over to Fortuna Transfer Station, there's a price difference for the disposal. So it's not the hundred and thirty-five, forty-six a ton that you pay HWMA. It's actually a hundred and twenty dollars and four cents per ton. So that's fifteen dollars and forty-two cents savings by taking the garbage to Fortuna Transfer Station rather than HWMA. If you, we didn't do the math on actually what, what the cost would be for fuel and man hours, putting miles, maintenance, all that stuff as well. That's on top of, of the savings of, you know, fifteen, fourteen. You want to go to the next slide? But then the other part of your pass-through would be recycle process. So this, this one was, uh, this one was pretty interesting. Recycle processing this year. The fees can go up or down based on a lot of factors. You've got a lot of, a lot of inputs to get your recycling processing fee. Uh, one of the big factors is commodity sales and CRV, right? So the commodity sales that we got from all of the recycling commodities that we were able to pull out this year, we, we did, we did pretty good. We did pretty good on commodity values. And then on top of that, Recology and the employees at Recology staff were together to go to the state of California and get back the CRV value that was, was associated with all those commodities. And then apply that to the actual recycling processing fee. So we were able to take all of the stuff that was being put in the blue bins and at a time when there was no buyback here in Humble County. So I, I, I don't know how long that's, it's going to stay, stay like that, but I think it had a really big impact. And what it means is that we went from eighty-two sixty-eight per ton to process recycling down to seventy-one dollars per ton. So pretty good savings, eleven percent this year for recycle processing. It was a good year for processing. If you want to go to the next slide. So to wrap it up, I mean, what is it, what does it really mean? I think that's the question is for the people that are, you know, looking at a, a rate change in their garbage bill. Currently, they're, you know, your average thirty-two gallon user is paying twenty-nine, thirty-eight for a thirty-two gallon can. Uh, we're looking at eighty-seven cents per month per user and that's going to go up to thirty, twenty-five, which is a two point nine seven percent increase. That's all I had. You have any questions? So.
Councilmember Wilson? Yeah. But I, I, I asked you a couple of things before the meeting. And there, I know they're not your place to answer the HWMA, sir. But, uh, I think the fact that we're, 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 we're being able to get our recycling through you and then you have a recycling center out small. That, that you're able to handle that. Did I understand you to say that you were able to, to, I guess, extract the CRV stuff as you went through that and you were able to get things that were at CRV value and you were able to turn those in?
Yes, sir.
Which helped contribute to the lower of the cost of water.
A- absolutely, absolutely. We work closely with Cal Recycle and what we do is we analyze the amount of CRV that's found in the recycling that we collect. And then anything that's, anything that, that's driven from that, any kind of rebates goes directly towards the cost of recycle processing.
Because in our case, we, we just, and I, I brought it up with the council meetings, that it was very frustrating when people couldn't go get their CRV. And you know that they were driving a crescent, so we tried to, uh, we cooked the CRV. But we just threw it in the recycling. So when we threw it in the recycling bin, that one, you were able to get that, which in turn, anyone else that did that helped lower the recycling cost to the cost of picking up our, our trouble overall there, so.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. So, so the, the, the way that, uh, the way that the, the recycling processing, uh, the best way to put it is that the cleaner the material and the higher the grade of, of recycling that's put in it, the less it's going to cost at the end of sorting it out, right? So if all the material goes in and all you put in there is aluminum cans and aluminum cans is the number one commodity on earth and, and nobody puts in garbage or food waste and nobody contaminates. I mean, the, the price is going to be significantly lower when you ended up, end up passing that through to consumers, but if, um, if the quantity of, of CRV material, and also if that's their CRV value on that, you can recuperate that, pass that savings on to the consumers too. But as soon as the, you know, the CRV comes out and I think garbage goes in, the cost goes.
The other thing, and I know it's not your, uh, Recology's responsibility, but the things tying so closely together is this, this part where, uh, I think they came, they had an article in our Post-Journal where HWMA announced that they're going to have, I think, you know, several months, not a lot of months. They're going to put taking recycling because they've taken their recycling center and they've committed to using that to be the thirteen eighty-three comp closing. Whatever. And so, uh, also in the budget for the HWMA, there was a, the cost of doing that thirteen eighty-three in the existing place and then that caused them to have to go out and search for a new place to take their recycling. Is another cost of maintenance dollars. But there's a, there's a cost that's was longer with the budget proposal wise. That that one is around four to five million dollars. The process that it will be higher, the cost of property and manpower and stuff. So I guess my question is, will that, will that be passed on to Rio Dell with that cost? The HWMA's current, will that, will we incur a cost?
Yeah.
To our, to our government's direction, right?
I, I guess the, the best way to put it is that if you're, if you're part of the JPA, then, and, and the, you know, there's, the, the fees and the costs are born between the members of the JPA. And, uh, how that actually breaks down, I'm sure that they'll have to go through and decide that budgeting. And I don't know if that's going to be born on, you know, a per capita basis or a per tonnage basis. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure on how they're going to set that. But I'm sure that, I'm sure that Pete, uh, that Peter can probably give you more answers than I can about that this time. I think that some of it's going to end up, you know, at, at some point, you know, the member agencies are going to have to work with the JP to figure that out.
Be, be a tough one.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a lot of unknowns, I think, with SB thirteen eighty-three. Um, we're working through them as we go. And, um, I think, you know, in the beginning of the process, it's, it's, it's a little bumpy, but we've got some really strong people that are working on it. I know that the consulting agency that's working on it is strong. I know that Eric and Peter over at HWMA have got a really good background in solid waste. I've got a lot of use of solid waste. Uh, we've got a pretty good team of people that are working on it. So and how it gets initiated and how it ends up, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure quite yet, but I'm excited to be part of the project.
Well, I, I, I do appreciate that. I mean, somebody's figuring the stuff. It's a complicated story, how all this takes place, but, but, but I, I still believe that garbage is an underrated price that people pay to get rid of their garbage. They, uh, it would be good for the public to figure out a way to, you know, reduce it, recycle it or, or our technology, you know. Not to do this stuff, uh, again, water bottles will sit up lying on water bottle that can be a CRV. And collectors, you get one that you can fill out of your tab or out of your refrigerator. So you don't, you don't go buy a plastic bottle, ask it to be handled, dealt with, packaged, transported and redeemed. You just drink the water and replace it all. And without everything that's going up in price, I think you guys have done an excellent job keeping our price down for the city of Rio. Thank you. It's, it's actually passed it on to the receiver.
Definitely.
But I think you did a great job.
Sir.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Councilmember Carter?
Uh, no questions from me. Thank you.
And no questions from me. Uh, thank you very much, Frank. Ordinance and resolution, I have one second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance three ninety-two, adopting the Rio Dell Police Department's policy seven oh six military equipment use policy. City manager, our chief, Reverend Johnson, members of the council. This is the second reading by title of ordinance three ninety-two, twenty, two, twenty twenty-two. By reference, that this department's military equipment policy recommending that you open the public hearing, receive the public input or testimony from staff, deliberate, close the public hearing and adopt resolution or ordinance three ninety-two dash twenty coming to improving our military equipment use policy. And as I stated earlier, this is a requirement from the state. They have deemed certain police equipment to be military, uh, military equipment, regardless of whether, where it came from or what it's used for. It appears that there, the, the idea behind this, uh, legislation is to increase the transparency and how this equipment is purchased or it's used for and what training is required before officers can actually use it. Um, in terms of what the Rio Dell Police Department has that meets this criteria, we have two items. We have our patrol rifles and we have a single windbag shotgun, uh, that's carried in the sergeant's patrol vehicle. But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if they come along. And you chief, at this time, will open the public hearing, uh, comments from council, councilmember Wall?
All our patrol rifles are building here?
No. None of our patrol rifles came from the military, but they meet the definition of military equipment as defined by the state. Thank you. Councilmember Carter, any questions?
None from me. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson? I'm good. And I'm good also. Thank you, chief. Uh, any public comment? From emails, comments?
Okay.
At this time, we'll close the public hearing and, uh, is there a motion to adopt ordinance three ninety-two coming from me too? For Rio Dell Police Department's military equipment use policy? So.
How's that?
Motion in a second, please vote.
I'm just going to say yes. Yes.
Motion carries four zero. And second reading by title only, adopt the ordinance three ninety-four, twenty twenty-two, approval resolution fifteen forty-six, twenty twenty-two, related to extension of Major J, the one percent transaction use tax, act for general purposes. So manager.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Johnson and members of the council. As, uh, as the mayor Proton mentioned, this is a second reading by title only of ordinance number three ninety-four dash twenty twenty-two. Uh, this has to be approved, uh, by a vote, uh, proposed within November election. Uh, the proposal before you would lower the current one percent transaction use tax uh, from one percent down to three quarters of one percent. And so it's a twenty-five, uh, percent reduction on this particular tax. Uh, the tax would also be, uh, uh, repealable only by the, uh, by a vote of, uh, voters of the city of Rio Dell. Stat's recommendation is to open the public hearing, uh, to receive public input, uh, deliberate and, uh, ultimately adopt, uh, our approved resolution number fifteen forty-six, twenty twenty-two, which will repeal, uh, resolution fifteen forty-three, twenty twenty-two. Uh, and set an election date for the proposed ballot measure, amended chapter three point one one of the Rio municipal code. Again, to reduce the one percent transaction use tax to point seven five percent. Um, also, uh, attached, uh, to your agenda, uh, this evening, the city attorney did have some minor additions and corrections to the language of the proposed, uh, resolution. And, uh, you'll see those outlined in blue on the following pages. So when that's, um, I will go ahead and return it back to the mayor Proton and the council.
Then you get this handed up from the public hearing regarding ordinance three ninety-four and resolution fifteen forty-six. Councilmember Wilson, any comments?
No, I think, I think it's, uh, certainly should we know that the, that it's a reduction as, as you had your comment, it's a reduction from one percent to some, uh, three quarters of a percent. Yeah, that's, I, I think, uh, in fact, that the city has managed the finances well. I think if you receive additional census tax from the bail order, something like Amazon, if things come to us. But, uh, again, I think, uh, I'm hopeful that citizens will support this. As, uh, I think this council has proven that they're and the staff is managing the money responsibly and putting it to good use, which is me seeing a relative. Before this.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter, any comments?
Uh, I just, I want to say that I, I really agree with what councilmember Wilson just said and I'm, I'm happy with the changes the city attorney made, um, to really highlight that it is a reduction. Um, and I hope this goes through and I will be talking this up with anyone who will listen. So, um, thank you and that's it.
Councilmember Wall?
Now I agree with Frank. Thank you, Frank.
Yeah.
And I totally agree with councilmember Wilson. The city has run extremely efficiently and as a result of that, um, you know, we've been able to do a lot of things and, uh, you know, as evidenced by the quality of streets that we're driving on and, uh, that's in part, major part due to the positive votes from the community twice and, and we hope a third. At this time, we close the public hearing and, uh, ask for a motion to approve ordinance three ninety-four, twenty twenty-two and resolution fifteen forty-six, twenty twenty-two, related to the extension of Major J, one percent transaction and use tax. Is there a motion?
I saw Lou.
Oh, second. We have motion in a second, please vote.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries four zero. Councilor and Communications.
Councilmember Wall, I don't have much, but the baby looks wonderful in town. Cherry Lane looks wonderful. Riverside Drive is great. And it's, um, money spent on some things that the community and the citizens can see. And it's, money stands on some things that the community and the citizens can see, which helps because so often they're not aware of where money, where money is going. But this is something they can see. Looks great.
Councilmember Wilson? I just, a couple of things. I have the the RCA, this is three, we worked out for both of them this week. But one of the things that RCA just did was they had the grand opening of their microgrid at the airport in McKinnon Mall. And where they put in a bunch of solar panels and then they send the power to batteries, charging through the night and when they take that, that power and they, they put that back into the grid, which they use to for the local area. But it's also set up for an emergency problem. The Coast Guard station and the airport itself, where emergencies were backed up with diesel generators. Now they backed up with the microgrid. And that also, I believe, includes any businesses that are on that property up there at the airport that they have a hangar repair service. That's covered under the microgrid. And this is in part that the state, and I don't know so much of federal government, but the state in particular is requiring that there's more and more of this battery storage issue. And we hear stuff about electric cars. One of the things that electric car batteries are being used for is just stuff like this long-term storage system. Because they're not as, as they become less efficient, they do have some capacity to be recharged the way that you do with your, with the solar power and store it. And this kind of goes along in lines with the HWMA stuff that we've mentioned tonight. There's just a lot of stuff that I'm, that I keep emphasizing is that our culture is very abusive in what we do with our waste systems and how we use our energy and how and so the more things that can be practical. And I'm not, my vote's not in on electric cars because you create a vehicle that has to have a battery that has a lifespan and they're very expensive there. They range anywhere from $24,000 for a vehicle's battery, I've heard, all the way up to $40,000. They weigh half a ton. They weigh close to 1,000 pounds apiece that these batteries are that are in those electric cars. And so there's a limited supply of the lithium that comes out of that. And like I mentioned last time, that lithium, the major source of lithium in the world is, is in Afghanistan. And that is not readily available to the people that are going to go out and buy 60, 80,000 of our cars. And so how does all figures, I don't really know. But everything that we can do on our own to reduce, reuse stuff is certainly important. So also to keep you updated on this, HWMA, they're going to spend some it's around $17,000 that they have to incur to replace the recycling center in order to also put it in 1383, which I believe we have an extension to five years or a non-extension, uh, exemption for five years until we have to do it. But we're going to have to eventually participate in that universal waste and collection and how it takes place.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you. I had a CalCities Transportation, Communication and Public Works Committee meeting. We also got to hear from Caltrans about using the recycled tires in the roads. And their number one example was, of course, Confusion Hill here in our neck of the woods. So now we're famous. Beyond that, we have a nuisance advisory committee meeting tomorrow at 3:00 PM in City Hall. And that is it from me. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended last week the Humboldt County Association of Builders meeting and Caltrans made a presentation on the safety corridor and the project that HTRG has been funding. The, as we may remember, some months ago, there was a bid opening and three ditters. The standard there did were significantly higher than the initial assessment of each gift. It was accompanied by a pit protest. And so with that in mind, Caltrans has been redesigning in major part the fill at the Indianola Bridge. And what they're going to, through our, we have a consultant called Pine Flotter, is they're going to be putting piling down to support the just because of the baked mud soils, which take a long time to get the moisture out of them and become stable. They just a long time to get to a neutral position. And so they're looking at it opening maybe next month or so with approval maybe in September. And they do not know exactly how much this is going to add to the cost of the project. They are confident that they're going to have to go back to the commission or some middle front. They think they've got enough money to afford the project, but not enough to build the project. So that's all I have. And is there a motion to adjourn? So we will stand adjourned until July 5th.